On to YouTube.
It's on the end, see what he's waiting for.
Could there be people?
Did you say Kyle is operating out of the translation?
Could you see corporate policy?
Okay.
Corporate personnel.
Okay. What's it she? So. It's a chocolate. Can't see them now, just see what that says. Okay, we have one o'clock. Welcome, everyone. As you can see, this is a new sort of hybrid approach over renovating council chambers. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order and please just bear with us as we get some of the bucks ironed out.
Today's we have an agenda before us.
Excellent. Is there someone who wishes to approve today's agenda? Thank you, Councilor Edget, seconded by, I think that was Councilor Steves. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We have adoption of minutes of the meeting of February twenty sixth and March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Is there someone who wishes to move those minutes? Thank you, Councilor Legere. Is there a second here for that? Anybody? Thank you, Councilor Edget. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, it seems to be missing a councillor.
Yeah, it would be nice to be able to see all the councillors. Oh, there's Councilor Richard.
Okay, you're all there. Okay, perfect. Declaration of conflicts of interest.
Uh, don't see any. I think on today's agenda, we should be good.
Okay, new business update to corporate procurement policy, and I believe that our C A O is going to introduce that.
Thank you, Shelley. So, Mayor and Council thought we'd bring forward an update to the corporate procurement policy. I'll provide a bit of an opening and then Jacques will walk us through the presentation. Basically, our current procurement policy, corporate policy, dates back to twenty eighteen. We've seen, again, not only inflation, but all overall growth impacting our budget over those, that six-year period, indicating that it was probably about time for us to review our procurement policy, looking at really some of the approval amounts at the, at the C A O level. Really trying to make this or bring it in line with other cities. Also, looking at increasing our, our efficiency, not only from a city perspective, but also binding the time of council as well. So with that, I'll pass it to Jacques, who'll walk us through the, the presentation and we'll be ready for questions.
All right, thank you, Serge. So what we'll do today, basically, I'll have Tanya walk us through, as the purchasing manager, she's gonna walk us through the presentation and then after that, I will summarize. So, Tanya, are you online?
She was.
She was there.
She was there.
Tanya, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Now I'll walk you through.
She's sharing the screen.
She's sharing the screen. Tanya, we can't hear you.
And I, so we controlling slides. You just say next slide.
I think I'm okay now. Great, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, Tanya, and when you want to, slide, just say next slide and I T will change it for you.
Uh, I think I can control it from my desktop, but.
Oh, okay, good.
See how it works. I'll give it a try.
Okay, great.
All right, so thank you so much for your time today. I'm going to try to make this as quick and painless as possible. So as Sals mentioned, we are looking to update the policy. It's, you know, about six years old now. And we want to try to bring it to, you know, reflect today's market. Our previous policy was updated in twenty eighteen. It was based on a review of thirteen Canadian municipalities and was approved by council in December twenty eighteen. And the objectives at that time were to increase the awarding and expenditure approval limits, incorporate some specific directives that we had received from council at that time regarding social procurement and preferential treatment. We also did not have a bid protest process in place, but now we do with the new policy. And incorporate best practices. So our rationale for revising the current policy is mainly is that the twenty eighteen dollar values that are reflected in the policy do not reflect the current real cost for goods and services as it exists today. Also, the corporation is generally making larger dollar value procurements than we were back in twenty eighteen. As our city has grown, so has our procurement values. We also want to reduce the number of routine procurements that are brought forward to council and have the C A O approve those for budgeted projects. And also incorporate some important changes that were made to the Procurement Act as it applies specifically to the eight cities. The benefits of revising the policy at this time is, number one, reduce the administrative time for council report forms, which can take anywhere between four to eight hours of overall administrative time to get through the process, reduce the number of items that we are bringing forward to council for approval. This will vastly help to improve our timeliness to award tenders and improve our project start date so we can hit the ground running a lot quicker. It also will align better with the approval limits established by other municipalities at the current time, at the present time, and also align with current market costs. So some of the key areas that are revised in the policy, and I believe the proposed that are revised in the policy, and I believe the proposed that municipalities can access in Canada and access their supply agreements. In the policy statement section, which is section five, sorry, section five, the procurement authority and responsibilities, essentially, we just updated it to add three responsibilities to the corporate departments. And in section six, in the procurement options, we updated it to refer to the N B O N website, which the tender information that we post now to the N B O N website now directs bidders to our new electronic bidding platform. We do still have a legal requirement under the Procurement Act to advertise our bidding opportunities on N B O N, but essentially, it directs them right to our electronic bidding platform. And also, we needed to define the alternative procurements that are permitted under the Procurement Act. So we added a little bit of a definition there so that people can understand or staff can understand some of the alternative procurements that are available to us as a municipal entity. We also wanted to address, update the preferential treatment statement to reference the New Brunswick First Procurement Strategy, which allows you to give preferential treatment to New Brunswick manufacturers, suppliers, and contractors, and also the Canadian Free Trade Agreement, which does allow you to apply a preferential treatment to Canadian manufacturers and suppliers. The other changes that we wanted to make were to Schedule A. So Schedule A essentially outlines the different thresholds to approve, or sorry, for, for tendering when we have to publicly tender something. So any goods or services exceeding a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar, thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars must now be publicly tendered unless we can apply an exemption. Or any construction exceeding three hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars must be publicly tendered. These are the new thresholds under the New Brunswick Procurement Act, which apply to the eight cities. The other change, big change we want to make to the procurement, corporate procurement policy, is the expenditure approval authority limits. So we first and foremost, we'd like to raise our current purchasing card, single transaction limit from, we'd like to raise it from four thousand dollars to five thousand. Increase the expenditure approval authority for managers up to seventy-five hundred dollars, directors twenty-five thousand. Increase general managers to seventy-five thousand and move the C A O's expenditure approval authority up to five hundred thousand using operating funds and five million dollars using capital funds. Again, these will only be the approval of expenditures that have been budgeted and approved through the annual budgeting process. These are the authorities that currently exist for other jurisdictions in the area. So the city of Fredericton, Halifax, and Red Deer, their C A O has unlimited approval authority for any budgeted, council-approved, budgeted items. The city of Saint John actually just very recently updated their expenditure approval authority. There was, theirs was quite low. And they essentially mirrored our current expenditure approval authorities. But more than likely, in a couple of years, they will probably have to be updating it quite soon as well. And probably they will bring theirs in line with, with most of the other jurisdictions at that time. Currently in the policy for any unbudgeted expenditures or expenditures that would exceed a project budget or would result in a budget overage, the current limit set for the C A O to approve that is twenty-five thousand, and we would like to change that to forty thousand dollars. Council will, of course, continue to receive financial updates from the C F O through these committee of the whole meetings, which will include the purchasing acquisition report, which lists all of the purchases that have been approved under the C A O's expenditure approval authority that will continue to be provided to council, and also updates will continue to be provided to council for any large capital projects or sensitive operational projects as required by, by city staff. So that is essentially my presentation, and I will turn it over to you for any questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Tanya. Council Richard, are you just being friendly or would you like to move the recommendation?
I am very friendly. Council Butler is having lots of problems. If I T could give him a buzz on his cell.
Okay, thank you. And I think Council LeBlanc is as well.
And Council Kingston.
And Council Houston too. Oh, my goodness. Okay.
So I don't know if, yeah, I mean, I know we have corn, but.
Yeah. Oh, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
In the meantime, is there someone who wishes to move the recommendation?
I can move it. I have questions.
Thank you, Council Richard, and seconded by Councilor Steves. Back to you, Council Richard. Go ahead with your questions.
Okay, Tanya, you used to there, right?
Yeah, of course.
Cool. So in, I'm gonna call it, was in the, in the policy, just some, maybe some clarifications on some, on, from page seventeen, just those different I got limited competitive bidding procurements restricted to specific products. Maybe if you could, I, I, I read all this, but maybe you could add a little bit of lamest terms to these or a little more clarification to these. At least the first, the first four that are on page seventeen of the policy.
The alternative procurement methods?
Yes.
Okay.
When we're restricting and stuff like that, I mean, I always question the sole sources, you know, when, when we can't, I think this is part of that certain points and.
Essentially, I, I simply made reference to the section of the regulation that it applies to. The regulation spells it out a little bit more. This simply references the different sections that are contained in the Procurement Act because it's a very long document to bring you right to each type, and it gets into the mechanics of each of those different types of alternative procurements and what the requirements are. So that was simply my, my intent was to just simply point staff to that particular section that applies to the different types of alternative procurements.
Okay, so being in red, it was, it was an addition, right? It was a change. So, I mean, I, I, yeah, I probably had access to the regulation if I go online.
You would, yes.
Is there anything new to what we were using, let's say?
No.
No, okay. That, that's, that's great. That helps. There's one. So can, can you, can you maybe explain just the, the number D or section D procurements by mutual agreement if only one supplier? And then below at F, you have procurement by mutual agreement. Sound the same, don't look the same? What would be the difference?
Okay, so with item D, which is procurements by mutual agreement, if only one supplier, that one specifies that you can enter into an agreement if there is only one prospective supplier that's able to meet the procurement requirements. So, for example, if we wanted to enter into an agreement with N B Power, which has a monopoly on the power grid, that alternative procurement, item D allows us specifically to do that. The difference with that one and between F, which is procurement by mutual agreement, essentially gives you permission to enter into an agreement with the supplier, but it may not necessarily be in a situation where that supplier has an exclusive monopoly on a particular good or service. So there's a little bit more involved with that, and typically what happens is if we want to enter into a contract with a prospective supplier and we, we're not sure whether or not they have an exclusive, some kind of exclusive control over a good or service, we would use an A C A N process to put a notice out to the marketplace to say, we intend to enter into an agreement with the supplier. We believe them to be the only supplier of this good or service. And unless you tell us any different, we will be entering into an agreement with that supplier. So that's what section F allows you to do. However, the caveat of that is that you have to apply an A C A N first to put a notice out that you, as far as you know, believe that there is only one supplier out there.
Okay, and that, that covers us. That's what, that's what I was looking for. That's awesome. Okay. Okay, page nineteen, we're looking at the minimum of two million per claim. It's, it's red, so it's new.
Yes.
What was the previous amount?
It has always been two million dollars. Under, when you open a business, you are required by law to obtain commercial general liability business. So if you own an actual business entity, and two million dollars is the minimum required by law. So we simply wanted to put that in there as recognition that you have to maintain that as part of their commercial general liability policy requirements, which is the minimum required by law.
Right, and I'm, I'm just gonna ask for clarification. I think I found my answer. The, the P card, the purchasing card, maximum is five thousand before going to, or going to tender, I'll say, or?
So with the procurement card, essentially what it allows staff to do is to buy any goods or services that we don't have available at our central stores or that we don't already have a supply agreement set up for. They can go out and buy it wherever they want. They don't have to shop around. Most of them do. But it gives them that flexibility. So anything above five thousand dollars requires a higher level of expenditure authority, so their manager will have to sign off on it or their director will have to approve it before they can even go and buy it. So it would go through a purchase order process. So it would be vetted through purchasing, but anything below five thousand, they can go out and buy it, pay for it, and their, and their manager reviews it at a later date.
Great, that, that's clarification, clarification I was looking for. Also, I'll just mention that to I T, I do not see a, a hand button. Like if I wanna, other than lifting my hand physically, I don't see that button anymore.
Thank you, Council Richard. I, I guess I would encourage anyone who wants to speak to wave wildly on the camera. Go ahead, Council Edget.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question would be regarding the approval authorities from the other cities. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Yes, and I was just wondering if you had considered what the others have been doing, which is unlimited?
We certainly did. However, we thought where we're making a fairly major departure from the thresholds that currently exist today, we didn't want to take too much of a leap. The unlimited thresholds that these agencies have instituted, as far as I know, are fairly recent and they, they are fairly recent changes that these municipalities made, and perhaps we will go there. However, if council wants to give us the directive to establish an unlimited approval authority for the C A O position, there is certainly nothing stopping you from giving us that directive and, and implementing that as part of our policy, if that is the wish of council.
My second question is, is this a policy we review every, I mean, we haven't reviewed it since two thousand eighteen. Would we normally review this every five years or?
I can take this from Tanya. So normally, that's our normal practice. We go through our policies on an annual basis. Right before we prepare the budget, we have actually, we include our policies within our kind of budget documentation, our budget process or so on. Since, so this one was approved, I believe it was approved in late twenty eighteen, yeah, December seventeen, twenty eighteen. And then after that, we went through COVID, so we didn't have a lot of, but then after that with inflation and, and so on. It's not like, there's not gonna be major updates to the policy because, again, it's quite standard. We work on North American trade agreements, European trade agreements or so on. But it should be reviewed on an annual basis, and if there are significant changes, we would bring them to council.
Thank you very much.
Council Legere, did I see you waving before?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just two questions. Tanya, can you maybe explain a little more? On page forty-one, you have in accordance with the New Brunswick Procurement Act, the city of Moncton shall advertise, is that the one? No. The one that, that gives preferential treatment to businesses in New Brunswick. And how would, has that changed from the past or is this just what we experienced when we had a local supplier and we couldn't award extra points, for example, for a bid for, for someone who was local?
The New Brunswick Procurement Act has never permitted a local preference policy, meaning Moncton-based suppliers. It has always been, and then with the New Brunswick First Procurement Strategy that was implemented a couple of years ago, they actually implemented a mechanism to give preferential treatment to New Brunswick-based suppliers. And they defined what that meant, suppliers and manufacturers, and they actually prescribed the percentages of preferential treatment that you can apply based on the dollar threshold. But there never has been a, what we call, what we would call local preference policy for Moncton-based suppliers. And the Procurement Act is not, actually specifically says that local preference cannot be applied in procurements. Only New Brunswick or Canadians.
But if we have a, if we have a locally based company, then by default, are they not considered New Brunswick-based?
Yes, yes, they are, yes.
If they're considered New Brunswick-based, then does that change what happened years ago with respect to a, a local large organization based in Moncton, which is New Brunswick-based, but we couldn't allocate any extra points for any things? And if it has changed, would it be possible to maybe take a look at that? Because I think that changes the landscape of, of how we can look at, if someone's based in Moncton, then obviously they're, they're a New Brunswick company.
If they meet the requirements of, of how a New Brunswick manufacturer or supplier is defined, because there are very specific definitions, especially with respect to a New Brunswick supplier, they, I believe they have to have a base of, of operations, so it's not just someone that works from home that is a sales representative, I don't believe constitutes a New Brunswick supplier. But yes, we can apply that preferential treatment for New Brunswick suppliers at our discretion if we choose to do so in our procurements.
So if I look back then at the whole Blue Cross situation, has that then changed now where there could be a preferential treatment because they are local and they are New Brunswick-based? And if that's the case, and when you said this happened a couple of years ago, why is it only brought to our attention now? Because I believe we, there was an extension to the contract, but this is the first to my knowledge, unless I missed something.
Okay.
So I'll just chime in a little bit. It's really important, though, and Tanya, you covered it, if I'm not covering all the bases, that we cannot just simply award a contract to a New Brunswick supplier. We can award points to a New Brunswick supplier, but they still need to go through a competitive bidding process. And the amount of points that we can award to a local supplier is very minimal. So in that event, and I don't have all the details of the case that you are talking about, I don't think that the amount of points we could have awarded for a local supplier would have changed the outcome of the process. You have to remember, this is to also protect the taxpayers, that you wouldn't just simply enter into an agreements that have not gone through a competitive bidding process. And if local suppliers knew that they would have the advantage because they are the only local supplier giving out service or goods, again, there would be nothing to avoid, to impede them from not really being competitive, right? So I think, and Tanya, add to it as well, the local supplier does not mean that we can award to a New Brunswick company without going to a competitive bidding process. It simply means we can award extra points based on a local supply, based on the fact that they're a local supplier. You have something to add, Tanya, to that?
Yes, I do. So in the case of our health and dental benefits provider, at the time that it was brought forward to council in, we actually did run the scenario that if we had have applied the preferential treatment percentages or points that are allowed under the Procurement Act, would it have changed the outcome of that award? And the answer at that time, given to council, was no. And that, that answer would still apply today. The, the points or the percentages that are allocated under the preferential treatment provision in the Procurement Act have, have not changed. Those thresholds have not changed, to my knowledge, in the past couple of years.
So that's where I was confused. So, so that's where I was confused because you indicated that it had changed in the last two years, and so it, it hasn't changed from, from the time that we, and I'm well aware of the, the small percentage of points that we could allocate and so on. So what you're saying is nothing has changed from what we, what we saw in two thousand sixteen, I believe.
I believe the Health and Dental Benefits was out to market in perhaps twenty nineteen. I'm not sure. I can't remember that, but we're back.
So from, so from that time, there's been no change, is what you're saying?
No, there has not been.
Okay, all right.
I simply updated the language in our policy to make, again, reference back to the New Brunswick First Procurement Strategy, which I believe the province of New Brunswick only rolled out a couple of years ago. That's a new program. But part of that program is. the application of the preferential treatment that already existed in the policy. That was part of that New Brunswick First Strategy, which was, which is now being marketed.
Okay.
But it existed prior to, it existed in the Procurement Act prior to the New Brunswick First Strategy being developed by the province a couple of years ago.
And where does this impact other businesses then? Uh, like how, how, I guess maybe at some point, it would be nice to just have a, a better look at what that means. Uh, it, it, there are great words to say that preferential treatment, but what exactly does it mean and how is it awarded? So for the sake of, of, you know, continuing discussion today, I would like to have more information if I could.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Leger.
I just, I, I have one question, but I have one second question. Uh, what is meant by, uh, when you, when we talk about increasing the, uh, these, the ability from, of the CAO on budgeted, council-approved items? What does that mean?
I can take that question, also Leger. Uh, so really what we're saying there is the items that we consider budgeted administratively are items that were included in the budget package. It was very well detailed what that project was because we have a project description page for each project. Uh, so, and so the scope of work does not change. And also it comes within the allotted amount that was included in that. So that is what we consider a budgeted expenditure. An unbudgeted would be one where, for example, sometimes we would have not enough detail on the projects and we would just say program funding or something. Those ones would need to come to council because again, council has not approved that specific project. Or secondly, it's over the awarded threshold of that capital project or, or operational project, uh, that was included in the budget binder. So that's the, that's the distinction.
So what, so I'm just trying to understand, i- if it's approved by council and, and it's in the budget, what, uh, when, when does it have, under the current program, things are coming back to council for another approval? Is that why we're doing this?
Yeah, so for example, right now, if we have a project, for example, that is a million dollars, we had a project description page in the budget binder that said that that work was going to be a million dollars. The project comes in at nine hundred fifty thousand. We still need to bring it to council, uh, for approval because the threshold is five hundred thousand for capital items. So what we're saying is if it's already been approved by council during the budget process, there was clear project description, the scope has not changed, and it comes in within that, uh, that amount that was set in the budget, that we would consider it good to go because nothing has changed from, uh, when it was approved. So for example, if we buy a, let's say we buy a, uh, we bought two, uh, snow, uh, equipments at the last council meetings. They were within budget, they were within plan, but they were over five hundred thousand. We needed to bring that to council. What we're saying here is that item was identified in the fleet plan, which was approved by council in the budget documentation. If it's under five million dollars, that one will no longer come.
So it's really, but what it does unfortunately is it takes away any discussion that we might have to just to question some of the purchases and so on. And, and we will see it in a report when it's, when it's done. But, uh, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, the, it, it seems to me more expedient, I'm not questioning what other cities do, I just find that it's, um, um, I don't know. I'll, I'll let other councillors, you know, what they feel. I, I'm not sure that I feel at the moment that we go that big leap. I have to have a better understanding, I think. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Bourgeois.
Merci beaucoup, Madame Lamarr. Est-ce que je peux parler en français ou la traduction est disponible?
Oui.
Okay, parfait, merci. Um, je vais sauter probablement en anglais puis français parce que j'ai des commentaires de les deux langues. Merci beaucoup Jacques et Tanya pour cette réflexion ou stimuler notre réflexion en fait compte, j'apprécie énormément. Um, when I got elected in June twenty twenty-one, one of the first things I asked from staff was, um, to, to identify and print out the, uh, we have forty policies, uh, at the City Hall. Um, so I think it's too much. And if we follow the guru on board policies, John Carver, we have way too many. Um, it might be just a question of, of, uh, regrouping, you know, all of the financial policies like this one into a policy. But, uh, if we have forty, we probably have too many. That's his opinion, it's my opinion. I think we should regroup some because I think we should have as a de facto policy to review every single one of those policies within a five-year period. So we should establish some sort of five-year policy review cycle, um, for the policies, but also for the bylaws. I mean, this is the, the essence of what we are supposed to do as a council, is to make decisions that take the form of bylaws or policies and review them, update them on a regular basis, um, and get away from some of the details. And I appreciate the, some of the, uh, recommendations that, the specific recommendations that you're outlining in the, in the review. For instance, uh, if it's budgeted, uh, the real debate should be held at the budget. Then if it comes under budget and it's as what we had previewed, just as Jacques explained, it should not necessarily come back to council for rubber stamping, uh, tender process or an RFP process and everything else. If it goes over and, and fine, then it's up to council to, to review. But I, I start off with those two comments. I, I still, I think we should have a policy review effort. Uh, council should look at all these forty policies and then decide how it wants to review it. But I suggest a five-year calendar. Uh, possibly regroup some of these policies together. So it's, you know, we review the financial policies, uh, on a, you know, regular basis within five years and, and all of them are, cut them up into a couple, uh, policies and then review them. I'll leave that up to the CAO, but I, I, I think it's a council decision to have a, a regular review of policies. What it should look like, maybe the CAO can give us guidelines, but I would suggest within five years, each and every one of those forty policies should be reviewed. Um, another comment I'd like to make is, um, yes, this would be better for the corporation, but we must not lose focus that we are a democratic corporation. And that means that our board is accountable to our citizens, not just staff, just to council. We, as a council, are accountable to our citizens and not just at election time. So if it is part of the budget process, great. We have those deliberations in public. Uh, we gotta make sure though, that when we have these modifications, that whatever happens, we have to have a, uh, a real sharp focus to make sure that it doesn't go overboard on the other side. Um, there's a comment here, uh, on the CRF. Um, transparency in the process remains strong as, I noticed on it, sorry. Um, uh, the CAO are included in the purchasing acquisition report, included in the committee of the whole financial statement presentation. Uh, I'm looking at sort of ahead, the next item, mid, mid-year review. When, when that, there's nothing in that document that alludes to over expenditures and, and list like that. So did I miss a document somewhere? It may have been during Jacques' presentation in March that I missed. Um, where, when, when do we have that? And, and through what format do we have that document that says, uh, here are the, uh, over expenditures, uh, list?
Jacques?
Yeah, take your worship, to the Conseil Bourgeois. So, uh, just a couple of things there. So, uh, the purchase acquisition report is the report that, um, has all the, the, the transactions that have been approved by the CAO from seventy-five thousand to five hundred thousand on the capital side and seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty on the operational side. As of now, the CAO's approval authority for items that are unbudgeted is twenty-five thousand. So all of the items that are over budget or by more than twenty-five thousand have actually come to council for approval. Uh, so that would be the reason that we do not share another document highlighting those because they need to come to council if we follow our, our policy.
Okay.
Oui, c'est ça, Conseil Bourgeois. À chaque fois que je présente les étapes financières, on inclut ce, ce rapport.
Okay, okay, parfait. Um, j'ai des questions, quelques questions sur le, sur la politique même, si vous me permettez. Madame Lamarr, je peux arrêter puis laisser les autres parler puis je reviendrai par après si vous préférez?
I, I think this, I don't see a whole lot of waving going on, so I think you could continue on.
Okay, merci. Um, sous, uh, sous la partie procurement principles and objectives, le quatrième objectif, ça dit, "To the extent possible, ensure openness, accountability, transparency and non-discrimination." Pourquoi qu'on ajoute "to the extent possible"?
Could you remind us what page that was?
Uh, okay, on about page five, page six, section three.
Tanya, do you want, do you want to answer that one or?
Just give me a moment to familiarize myself with that. I believe the, um, I guess the intention of that statement is "to the extent possible" because there are procurements at times where we cannot be, um, as open, um, or have, have as much transparency as we normally do with the majority of our procurement processes, um, especially when we are dealing with a procurement that may involve, uh, commercially confidential information, um, or, you know, um, other contractual matters permitted and the other things that are permitted under the private council meeting authority. So we absolutely do endeavor, of course, to provoke, to be as open and transparent as we can with all of our procurement activities. Um, but that is not always applicable a hundred percent of the time. And, um, there, uh, and obviously, it, it has to be done on a, on a case-by-case basis and thankfully, that is the, it doesn't happen very often. Um, so that is simply a, a statement to that effect, to say that within the reasonable extent possible, um, in consideration of, you know, Protection of Private Information Act and, and all of the other acts that apply, um, to commercially sensitive information, we, we do try to be as open and transparent and accountable for our procurement and financial transactions as, as much as we reasonably can.
Je comprends ça. La question, c'est pourquoi qu'on l'a à numéro quatre? Puis on ne l'a pas à numéro un, à numéro trois et à numéro cinq? Parce que un, trois et cinq, ce sont tous des objectifs qui sont assujetti à "to the extent possible". Anyways, so la, la chose de simple pour moi, c'est que ce sont cinq objectifs. On a fait les poursuivre comme n'importe quel objectif, n'importe quand. On a fait "to the extent possible", mais n'obligé de l'écrire parce que ça devient un objectif qui est conditionnel à "to the extent possible". On pourrait dire la même chose pour cinq. "To the extent, to the extent possible to ensure consistency and fairness", numéro un. "To the extent possible, conduct the city's procurement activities in compliance". C'est fait dire? So, uh, moi j'aime pas qu'on met "to the extent possible", c'est probablement la solution. Si jamais on ça se fait pas, vous l'expliquez puis on, on est capable de comprendre les exceptions à la règle. Moi, je, je propose donc que vous l'enleviez de, de numéro quatre ou que vous l'ajoutez à un, trois et cinq. Puis dans ces cas-là, c'est plus des objectifs, c'est des objectifs conditionnels.
Oh, oui, I, I, I think, I, I understand your point. So, uh, we'll take that, we'll take those four words out. I, I, I understand absolutely, that's a good point.
Okay, merci beaucoup. J'ai une deuxième question, c'est à la page vingt. Uh, c'est juste avant le, l'item cinq, procurement authority and responsibilities. Ça dit violation, ça change pas grand chose de la, la politique en vigueur. Violation of this policy and guidelines will be documented and reported to the chief administrative officer, au lieu de city manager, fine, and will be considered grounds for discipline up to and including dismissal. Mais ma question, c'est qu'est-ce qui arrive si c'est, un employé est au courant que le chief administrator officer, le gérant, a commis l'infraktion? Il y a rien là-dedans, c'est violation of policy and guidelines? Je fais confiance au gérant, mais il faudrait qu'il y ait quelque chose. C'est peut-être le whistleblower protection, je sais pas là, mais...
And, and in that case too, Conseil Bourgeois, just to add a little bit, um, I review those transactions and it would be in my responsibility with my accounting organization and also as my role of treasurer of the city to report a transaction that I would deem to be, to be not incongruent with this policy.
Okay. Ça, ça me fait poser une autre question. Dans la loi municipale avant, il y avait trois postes qui étaient garanties, euh, qui étaient des postes statutaire, le gérant. Euh, il y avait le chief financial officer, puis il y avait le city solicitor. Je, je sais pas si la loi actuelle protège ces trois postes-là, mais ma question en fait compte, c'est pour le, le, pour Jacques, le, le, notre compteur en chef. Um, est-ce que tu te sens assez indépendant du gérant pour rapporter des choses comme tu viens d'écrire au conseil?
Oui.
Okay, parfait. Je crois que j'ai une autre question. Excusez-moi, faut je? De rôle, de rôle, de rôle, de rôle, de rôle. Wait, okay, uh, page vingt-quatre. Uh, ça va avec a preferential treatment? Je voulais juste savoir si, um, s'il y avait une possibilité jusqu'à que le conseil légal l'a soulevé. Um, mais je suis pas sûr que j'ai compris la réponse. Est-ce qu'on est capable d'accorder oui ou non? Des, du pointage même si ça fait pas différence dans certains cas, mais est-ce que oui ou non on est capable d'accorder certains points à des compagnies locales? Puis je suis pas, je suis pas décidé en faveur d'une façon ou d'une autre parce que je sais que si nous autres on le fait, bah tout le reste des autres vont le faire puis les compagnies de Moncton sont pas capables de compétitionner ailleurs. Ça, c'est un coup de dos tranchant, mais est-ce que c'est légal selon le New Brunswick Procurement Act de donner des points oui ou non?
Tanya?
Euh, est-ce que je peux vous répondre en anglais?
Oui, oui, oui.
Merci, c'est plus facile de m'exprimer en anglais. The New Brunswick Procurement Act specifically does not allow municipalities to apply local preference to vendors or suppliers in their municipality. It only permits preferential treatment to be applied to New Brunswick manufacturers, suppliers and contractors under the New Brunswick First Procurement Strategy. And it prescribes very specific percentages or points. and it prescribes very specific percentages or points, which is a very small small numbers based on the dollar threshold. So generally speaking, if the procurement bid document makes reference to the fact that a a preferential treatment will be first and foremost applied to a New Brunswick manufacturer, supplier or contractor as it pertains to that specific procurement, it has to disclose that in the document. It has to disclose what those preferential points or percentages that will be applied based on the dollar threshold. There's different different amounts for different dollar thresholds. So if there are two bidders and let's say there's a thousand dollars difference between the two of them, if that procurement document allows for preferential treatment to be applied and the New Brunswick supplier is a thousand dollars more than someone else outside of New Brunswick, the per- the award can go to the New Brunswick supplier under that per- under the application of that preferential treatment.
Okay, superbe. Est-ce que ça, le donner de préférence à des compagnies New Brunswickois, ça rencontre le Canada European Union Comprehensive Economic and Trade Agreement? Chapter nineteen government procu- procurement?
There, there is a uh procurement, there is preferential treatment uh that can be applied to Canadian manufacturers, suppliers under the Canadian Free Trade Agreement um for procurements that fall within that threshold. Um as it applies under, for any procurements uh for thresholds that are within the Canadian European Trade Agreement, I do not believe that there is any preferential treatment that can be applied to Canadian uh suppliers uh through that trade agreement. I I don't believe there's any preferential treatment that can be applied whatsoever.
So the New Brunswick legislation is contrary?
The New Brunswick legislation only applies to procurements up to a certain dollar threshold. Once it goes over that dollar threshold, then the Canadian Free Trade Agreement kicks in, that's the next level up. Once, if the procurement value exceeds the Canadian free trade agreement threshold, then S I D A is the next one up the chain. And then if your procurement exceeds that one, then the World Trade Agreement applies to that, so that's the chain of command.
Okay, merci beaucoup. Merci Madame Lemarre, merci Tanya.
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Crossman? First, yes, I think you were waving, weren't you?
Yeah, I was. My question was answered in a in a certain way earlier um with with the exact point that Counselor Legere and Bourgeois brought up. But Tanya, just a quick verification, so what this mean with the procurement act um and the possible changes, and I'm not saying that, you know, a New Brunswick company has to automatically win a tender, does this mean that when council approves a um a recommendation from staff and then there's a there's an option to refill or renew that operation, that uh that uh policy, or sorry, that tender, within two to three years, does that mean in two to three years, we have the option to actually go out and re-tender versus automatically um you know, having this come back to council through the direction of staff to say, you know, that this was a tender that was put out, council did approve it and every two to three years, we put an extension on it and just basically rubber stamp it. Are we, we talking that we now have a different avenue on those expired options?
No, one one has nothing to do with the other. Um so essentially, when we award a tender, um if it has contract extension options available within it, uh generally, we don't bring those to council. We, you know, deal with the vendor directly. We look at their service history, we talk with the department, we look at what they're proposing for any price increases. We look at what the current market conditions are and then that decision is made um generally through administration. However, there have been a few instances for high-profile or extremely large dollar value um procurements where we have gone to council um with a recommendation um to extend our existing contracts. One example of that was, for example, the one, uh the agreement for the water treatment plant operation and the other was for our health and dental benefits. Um but we went through a full analysis process internally to determine whether or not it was in the city's best interest to exercise our option to extend that, those agreements or not, which is the same process that we generally apply for all of our procurements that have um the option to extend the contracts. We go through that same due diligence process. It's simply that the majority of them are not brought forward to council um for for a decision point or we don't bring forward a recommendation because they're they're on a much smaller scale.
Right, and then the larger scale ones, so would be under the understanding that even though there is an extension on this, that council can, council cannot say, let's go back out to R F P and get today's value for that, that we automatically extended?
With any contract extension option that we have available, it is always within purely the city's decision whether or not we want to extend that option or go back out to market. Um and the same would apply to a contract extension that was brought forward to council if it was a high-profile or extremely high-dollar value procurement. Uh just as we did for the health and dental benefits, we would do our due diligence, bring forward a recommendation to either extend or not extend the contract and then council would vote on that accordingly to either accept or reject administration's recommendation based on the analysis of all the uh facts at hand at that point in time.
Okay, good. Thank you, Roche.
Thank you. Anyone else start waving furiously? All right, I see no other questions. Other question, all those in favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. This is good governance and appreciate all the the work that was done on it. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is financial statement upgrade, uh update, and Jean, you're going to be speaking this.
Yes, I would. Okay, so yeah, in our package, we have uh the financial statements uh year-to-date uh until May. Uh and we also have the purchasing acquisition report kind of relating to the questions asked on the previous item for the month of April and May. So at la- last time we updated the financial statement, we had grown, brought in March or so on. So our financial statements were almost midway through the year. Again, uh the financial statements for municipalities, especially uh for one uh like Moncton who does encumbrance accounting, uh we're really starting to see our financial position now in May, June. This is where we really start seeing where we're at. Currently, uh we are nine-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand uh better than budget. Um but as you can see, there's, there are some catch-ups that came from the A- our April position or our March position, which was last communicated to council, that have impacted our balance. I think this is something that normally occurs, our statements, because when a a purchase order is committed, even if the work has not occurred, it will hit our financial statements, uh so this is normal. We're really in a good position right now. If I go to page uh page three, uh which is actually the statement of variance, for our general fund, we are nine-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand better than budget. I'll just provide you with uh some highlights uh from our revenues and our expenses, so uh from a big, in sustainable growth and development, we are four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand better than budget now. Although, as you can see, uh a lot of our building permit budget revenue is, occurs mostly in the summer season. Um so our building permits, as of now, are four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand better than budget. A good new story, it's not changing from the last time I reported the financial statements. Uh Kodiak transport continues to be busy, uh they are a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand uh better than budget. For community services, we are eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars better than budget, which is really positive. Uh the majority of that is in our venues, so mostly our uh coliseum, uh trade shows, uh the market and so on. We are four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand better than budget. But I, as I will report later on when I go through the expenses, um the expenses are actually more than that right now, so uh so those two kind of balance out uh when we look at them as a business unit. And then in finance, uh we are five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand uh and four-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, eighty-two-thousand of that is our interest revenues because of the interest rates continue to be high. Um and we didn't budget where we were, we gave ourselves some buffer. Uh the interest rates were cut by the Bank of Canada last month uh or this month, so we should see uh that uh increase uh reduce over the next uh six months. On the expense side, uh in corporate services, this position has not changed since last time, we're three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand over budget. Uh the main reason for that is uh the I S licenses, the leases or so on. We approved the new Microsoft licenses. Uh this was brought to council, it was an item approved by council, it was over our budget limit. Uh we think this this amount will carry forward throughout the rest of the year. Uh next, in finance, five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand better than than budget. Uh that's due to a multitude of things. We have some salary savings due to vacancies. Uh our interest uh expenses uh is a little bit better uh than what we had seen and fleet services uh are also better than budget by a hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars. Uh the next one I want to relate uh from the operation side, we're two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand. In the operation size, there's a lot of areas that become over or under. It all depends on where the actual Q B workers go to work. Uh but really, if we want to summarize it in layman's terms, elevator speech, uh the two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand that were better than budget is mostly due due to snow, which ended the year at three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand better than budget. Um for community services, again, this is where we would see the offset to the venues revenue that I reported, so venues, the venues uh is a six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand worse than budget, but again, we have four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand better than budget or so on. So I think uh overall, what we're projecting at the end of the year will be okay if you combine the revenues and expenses. Uh and the last one, sustainable growth, um again, that one is two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand uh behind budget. Uh urban planning is eighty-four-thousand worse than budget, but uh that is part of the council contingency that we had allocated uh for the urban growth strategy of last year, so once that project is completed, uh we will bring the reserve to offset that overage, so we believe sustainable growth and development will be okay at the end of the year. And grants is currently five-hundred-thousand worse than budget. Uh at the end of the year, we think we'll be at around four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand uh thousand over budget. That is due to the way that we pay um M I D uh for, to operate their business and the fact that when we prepared um the funding formula in late September, early October, uh we didn't have all the assessment information in at that time, uh but overall, we think we'll be good. And right now, we've done some projections as well. Uh we've only really updated the ones that we think will be material or will hold through to the end of the year. And we are projecting uh again conservatively, but that um our, we will still be in a positive situation at the end of the year if nothing major changes based on the information we have today. On next page, our utility budget. Uh this one is one, um again, we are six-hundred-and-five-thousand overall better than budget. Um as you can see, we're still pretty close on all of our, on all of our lines. Uh we're seeing uh an uptake in our water uh, our water and that would be uh due to usage. Most of it for us is commercial, commercial usage that we're seeing, so that's really positive for the city. That means the businesses are are really um, they are working. It's not like the COVID years where everything was shut down. So overall, we're pretty uh, we're pretty good on the utility fund as well. Uh we've also attached, as mentioned, the purchasing acquisition report for the month of April and the month of of May. Uh just a few items that I'll highlight in there because uh I know um that we will get some questions on it. Uh so the single sources again, uh or the sole sources, you will see sole sources um allocated in the April report and in the May report. A lot of that has to do with the fees that we have to pay for the relocation of some communication line, so that would be with Rogers, Bell. Uh there's another one in the May report uh that has to do with, it's a company that I was not too sure about. It's called, eh, hold on. It is called Zayo Own Overhead uh Telecommunication Line, so those three are related to the same project. Um other ones that we would have in there in terms of sole source, I know there is one that uh Conseiller Deschamps will ask, so I will hit the question before. So the S U Vs, uh we did go to market for those. Um nobody wanted to bid uh based on a market, saying right now, the dealerships are in a place where they do not like to bid and to, and have to hold their prices uh for too long. So normally, when we go out to market, they don't bid, but then after that, they will contact us and say we have six vehicle at the, on the lot for this pricing. Uh and then what we do is we validate with the other companies uh that they are there, so that is my presentation for the, for today. Uh we can open it up to questions uh on the items and uh if there are anything we cannot answer, we'll make sure to give you the information. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Bourgeois.
Merci beaucoup, Madame Lemarre, merci beaucoup, Jean. Euh c'est plusieurs petites questions, Monsieur, par rapport à à un item qui est les intérêts, le revenu des intérêts. Si je lis bien le le à la page trois, on a quatre-cent-quatre-vingt-deux-milles dollars de plus que ce qu'on avait prévu à ce temps ici de l'année, c'est ça?
C'est ça.
Okay. Qu'est-ce qu'on avait prévu comme un million?
Euh je pense à la fin de l'année, mais Lani, es-tu es-tu en ligne pour répondre spécifiquement la question?
Euh je crois, le two-thousand-and-twenty-four budget, um budget um I I can get back to you in a minute. Let me just um get the proper information.
Okay, je vais poser mes autres petites questions. Euh est-ce que le taux qu'on a investi, est-ce que c'est c'est fixe ou est-ce que ça varie? Et donc serait baissé peut-être? Peut-être que non, avec la baisse des taux préférentiels que la Banque du Canada a annoncé le mois prochain?
Euh donc il y a une chose que que je veux clarifier un petit peu aussi. Euh donc nous, quand on prépare le budget, surtout en termes de 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 faire des projections pour le taux d'intérêt, on n'a jamais budgé le montant exact à cette date pour deux raisons. Un, ça ne donnera pas de buffer qui pourrait impacter euh nos euh nos citoyens dans deux ans si qu'on fait un déficit. Et deuxièmement, on s'attendait les les revenus à la euh ce, à la descente cette année. On savait pas nécessairement quel temps. Il y avait des discussions que ça l'a peut-être réduire au mois de mars, ça peut arriver. Euh donc nous, on a été avec un taux un petit peu plus conservateur en termes de ce que nous, qu'on projette. Puis ce qu'on fait aussi nous, on regarde ça parce que du côté des dépenses pour le taux d'intérêt, ça, c'est ce qu'on paye nos réserves euh en termes du taux d'intérêt, surtout parce qu'on utilise euh notre cash flow pour euh pour nos projets capitaux. Donc euh ce qu'on fait, on est conservateur du côté des des revenus, mais on est aussi conservateur du côté des dépenses, donc ça se balance un petit peu. Euh puis Mélanie va le, va donner le chiffre exact en budget comme revenu. Euh puis d'autres choses aussi, nous autres comme revenu, c'est vraiment l'argent qu'on a en banque aussi qui est un autre facteur. Donc cette cette année, par exemple, jusqu'à ce, quand on va emporter la station de de police, par exemple, c'est un projet uh capital qui est majeur, on le, on le fund avec nos réserves jusqu'à ça qu'on va, qu'on va puis on emprunte puis on va à la municipal capital borrowing board au moins, puis nous autres on va aller à l'automne. Donc il y a aussi la partie cash flow, quand qu'on fait notre budget, il faut faire attention. Euh donc on prend des décisions euh avec ça aussi.
Oui, non, non, mais j'ai compris ça là puis quand c'était venu nous présenter le 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 la stratégie d'investissement, j'étais d'accord et cetera, mais j'étais juste surpris, agréablement surpris, si je comprends bien, qu'on a fait, on a gagné dans les cinq premiers mois de l'année quatre-cent-quatre-vingt-deux-milles pièces de plus que ce qu'on avait estimé. Correcte-moi là, c'était ça?
Exactement ça, oui.
Oui, okay, alors, alors je je, ma question après ça, c'est okay pour les sept prochains mois, le le fin de l'année que on a budgé, euh est-ce que les est-ce que les taux sur lesquels on investissait, qu'on prévoyait gagner, vont aussi baisser? Donc on peut s'attendre à un autre six-cents-mille pièces de plus ou quatre-cents-mille pièces de plus d'ici la fin de l'année? Ou comment tu dévois ça?
Jacques, j'ai tout mon détail. So Conseiller Bourgeois, our annual budget for revenue is about three point three million dollars and we earn about two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars per month right now. So as the interest rates are predicted to be reduced between now and the end of the year, we'll probably earn around approximately, say, two hundred and fifty thousand per month or give or take between here and the end of the year. So we are projecting kind of a surplus on that one line item, but that gets also offset by some interest we pay out to our reserves at the same time.
OK, je suis verté, there are packages, ma question, dans une question, on se fier d'avoir trois point trois millions à peu près de revenus sur les intérêts. Si la tendance se maintient, qu'on a gagné demi-million de plus dans cinq mois, on gagnera peut-être un million de plus que le trois point trois millions, donc quatre point trois millions d'ici la fin de l'année si tout va bien?
Oui, c'est ça.
On pourrait, mais en même temps, ça va dépendre de la Banque du Canada et des décisions qui sont faites parce qu'à chaque fois que la Banque du Canada, nous, notre taux d'intérêt qu'on est en train de, c'est basé sur le prime. Donc à chaque fois que le prime diminue, notre budget diminue pas, mais oui, on va être positif à la fin de l'année.
À peu près un million, barre-parle.
C'est ça.
Merci beaucoup, merci Madame Le Maire.
Thank you, Counselor Richard.
Merci Madame Le Maire, merci Jacques, présentation, merci à Mélanie aussi. Juste, tu sais que je vais tenir tout le temps sur le single source, sole source, j'apprécie. So tes explications sont bien et j'apprécie bien ça. Y a, j'ai trouvé ma petite main, tu?
Anyone else? I can't see everyone, so is anyone waving furiously?
Oh, Charles, Conseiller de la Gare.
Counselor Legere, go ahead.
Just curious, it's a good trend that we're going to electric vehicles. My question though is if we bought six of them, just to refresh my memory, how many chargers do we have and how are these put into our fleet? And maybe lastly, I guess which departments are, do all departments want electric vehicles? Or how is this working?
Thank you, Worship, to Conseiller de la Gare. When, what we do is when we analyze any request that, any opportunity we have to purchase an electric vehicle that will work for the user department or so on, we try and pitch that as a first option. In some instances, for example, it does not work depending on the battery usage or what that vehicle is used, but that is kind of the first blush that we will do. These SUVs can actually be plugged into, they don't necessarily need the big chargers. What happens with these vehicles? They can be plugged into a regular home outlet or so on, that can be set up basically anywhere. Again, the plan moving forward, we're actually doing a fleet electrification study right now. We're looking at those options, working with, based on, OK, do we need more high-power chargers here or there or so on to make it work? For now, the ones we're purchasing can actually, the plugging in overnight actually work for that usage of that vehicle.
And did we pilot one of these or did we just purchase six that we've never had before?
No, we do have some others, electric vehicles in our fleet.
Similar to this one?
That's right.
OK, and so, and you find that the trickle charge, so where are they trickle charged then? In different facilities that we have?
I would need to get back with that exact information of where they are all, where they all get plugged. I know that some will do get plugged at City Hall. I don't see one plugged right now, but...
We'll get back to you, that's off topic right now. But anybody else, anyone waving? I can't see everybody, please. Anyone see anyone waving? Not, I believe we are at the conclusion of today's agenda. Counselor Richard, motion to adjourn? Thank you, thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone, merci.